Have that memo, but we're prepared to discuss any of them this evening if you wish. But at the end, that memo ends up suggesting that per the calculation, that the allowable density on this property is around 9.3 lots. That supports the conventional plan that we had prepared going back to the sketch plan application in December of 2019. But with that all, so putting that aside though, in meeting with the applicant, the applicant had follow-up discussions with town staff, and the point is, we did listen to the board. The board obviously had some concerns about the layout of some of these lots. So what we're actually here for this evening is what the applicant is proposing is to drop one lot from the development and propose eight total lots, one lot for the existing home and seven new building lots. You should have received yesterday a revised conventional plan, which is what I have up here to my left. This conventional plan shows an eight-lot layout. Lots one through seven conform to the requirements of the R3 zoning district, and lot eight, which is located in the northeast corner of the property, is an oversized lot. It's over one acre in size, mind you, the required minimum lot size is 22,000 square feet. It's an oversized lot, just over one acre in size, so that it can accommodate the stormwater management area, which is now located on the conventional plan in the area of where drainage on this property ends up, which is in the northeast corner. The surface area represented by that stormwater management area is the same surface area as shown on the preliminary final cluster plan, the engineered design stormwater management facility. So it is a compatible facility. But the point is, as you can see on this revised conventional plan, is that eight lots is a feasible and accurate number of lots that can be supported by the zoning of this property. So really what we're looking for this evening is two things, is one is that the density at eight lots is an acceptable density to this board, and then subsequently, what I want to make you aware of is what I have just flipped up is what you had seen as the proposed preliminary final plan, the nine-lot plan as the cluster subdivision. What I wish to point out is this lot here, which was lot two on your preliminary final plan, that is the lot that's going to get dropped. We are going to eliminate that lot. That was the lot, the lot I should say, that we heard a lot of comment about during the hearing on May 5th of its relationship to the stream channel through the property and whatnot. So that's the lot we would revise, or remove I should say, from the property, and then that lot would spread out over the remaining lots. Lot one will remain as is on the east side of the channel, which encompasses the existing house. So that wraps up alls we wanted to do as an introduction. As I said, what we hope for this evening is that the eight-lot density is acceptable to the board, and if so, we would go ahead and revise the preliminary final application and the plans, the cluster plan, and resubmit to come back to you at your next meeting to, I guess, continue that public hearing based on an eight-lot subdivision application.
Okay. And again, Peter, this, it was previously, it's a public hearing, so we'll go along with that if anybody is interested or what, you know, so. But at this point, anybody who considers?
Whatever memo he's talking about, I never saw. We never got it. The memo you were talking about, where the Commissioner of Public Works went through the zoning, was never received.
Didn't we get there quite a while ago?
Yeah, the date is May 6th, so it was the date after the May 5th public hearing, and the copy we received shows that it was addressed to planning board members, so.
Yes. That's, you know what?
We don't have a copy.
I have it home, but I don't have it with me. I didn't print it out. But I think that was, that was addressed.
But I don't have a copy of it.
No?
Yeah. I don't, just like, I never received. I never received one either.
Okay, well, okay, then let's, let's pack up then, if you don't have it.
Well, Mr. Taylor.
That actually did address the stuff. I remember seeing this stuff.
Yeah, if, if you would like.
It's already addressed.
Yeah, if you'd like, I'll probably go through this in under five minutes.
Then do it. Let's, let's get right to it and be done with it.
I apologize that you haven't seen this.
Nope, that's okay.
What this memo does is, is it does go through each item of the code, starting at 192-27D1, and it basically references what the code says, and then references how this property complies. The fact of the matter is, what we're dealing with is really the first two items, 1A and 1D. When this is, 192-27D is number of dwelling units permitted. Starts out that the maximum number is based upon dividing the land area by the normal minimum required lot area. If you recall, back on March 9th, we had provided you a letter, and I know you have that because that was discussed in the meeting on May 5th, of how we walked through those calculations. So starting out at the 4.76 acres, convert and divide that by the 22,000 square feet, you end up mathematically that the property yields 9.5 lots. But D1A says lands used by public structures or right-of-ways may not be considered as part of the total gross area. In other words, if you have any property that is occupied by a public right-of-way or a public structure, it needs to be removed. The commissioner states, which we agree with, is that there is no right-of-way on this project or proposed for this project. The access is a private road, and there is no public structure. That is a correct statement.
Excuse me, what about the water main?
Yep, I'm ready to address that. Because I was going to say, that was brought up. The fact of the matter is, a water main is not a public structure. It is infrastructure, but it is not a public structure. In addition to that, the water authority does not take rights of way, and that's the key term in here. It says lands used by public structures or right-of-ways. Water authority does not take right-of-ways. Water authority takes easements. An easement do not convey property. An easement conveys right of access. The underlying property remains an owner, and therefore, that land can thus be allocated to the lot area.
But the water, the water main is still owned by the water authority, correct?
The water authority is, yes.
They own the water main?
Yes, they do.
So that is the public structure?
So if you want to take out an eight-inch diameter water main.
No, no, no. Peter, yesterday, I spoke with Derek, I spoke with Derek. I spoke with Raji yesterday on this whole topic.
Yep.
And went through this whole thing. I said, well, what is it legally? They have easements onto private property. Does that diminish the property use into the calculation? I guess Raji's answer was, no, it does not. It is all private property.
That is correct.
The easement has nothing to do with the property itself, other than just the use of going through it.
That is correct.
So that's, that was Raji's determination.
Well, because, well, I'm looking at it from a perspective, if you're saying that this is a private water main, because it's on private property, you need to protect it at the right-of-way with a backflow preventer.
That, that, that's mixing apples and oranges here.
I don't, I don't believe so. It's, it's a water main, it's serving all the properties out here.
It is a public main.
And it has a fire hydrant on it.
It is, first of all, let's get this straight. It is a public water main. There's no question about that.
And a water main is a structure.
A water main is infrastructure, and there is a difference between those two words.
Yeah.
Okay. And, but that, the real fact of the matter is, is that it is conveyed, as your counsel has told you, it's within an easement. An easement does not convey property.
Also, if it did through the backflow preventer, would that not be a requirement of Monroe County Water?
Correct.
We don't have to be worrying about that.
That's correct, and one is not a requirement on this project.
So you, you have an easement?
Yes, the project is proposed, yes.
And how wide, how wide is that easement?
Well, it's combined, how this is working because of the private road. It is combined as a total 60-foot-wide easement because it encompasses the private road, because typically the water authority would use a street right-of-way, but in this case, since it is a private road, the easement would be conveyed, a right of access is conveyed to the water authority also as part of that. So it is a 60-foot easement to the water authority, so they have the right to use the private road to access their main for maintenance.
And you don't have the ability to build on top of it water main, or within the easement, correct?
We're building the road within the easement. The landowner has the ability to use that property within the easement.
But there's no structure at it?
No.
Right, they're not allowed to put a structure on top of it.
No.
So that's, again, what I'm saying is that easement, it's for the water main, not necessarily the whole width of the thing. But the access easement to give service for that water main is not usable by the landowner, because he can't go put a shed on top of it, he can't build a garage on top of it. He can plant flowers if he wants.
That's always within an easement.
Yes, and I would counter that though, based on your logic of thinking there then, that a lot of 22,000 square feet, that you should not count the area out excluded by the setbacks, because the owner can't put a shed within the rear setback, the owner can't put a house within the front setback. So you should exclude that area also, which we know is not the case. This is why I said it is an apples and oranges comparison. At the end of the day, the easement does not convey property. That property underneath that easement is owned by the lot owner, and there is why it can be included as part of their lot area.
If it was a dedicated road going in there, ultimately a dedicated road, then that obviously, that property where the roadway, that acreage for any roadway would have to be subtracted from the overall amount.
Correct, because it would be a right-of-way, which is land that is conveyed to another entity.
Yeah, public land.
Correct.
No, I'm okay with that. I got that. I mean, I spent a lot of time, we had a, we met up town one day there, and we went through all this, and we beat it to death.
So then.
I don't even want to dwell on that anymore now.
Yeah, do you want to move on?
Yes.
Okay, so then the second item, which was D1B, as in void, is about, it states water bodies, comma, all areas within the 100-year flood boundary as indicated on the flood insurance maps issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and state and federal wetlands shall be subtracted from the gross lot area. First and foremost, there are no designated or jurisdictional federal wetlands on the property. Second of all, there is no flood plain on this property as defined by the code, which is a 100-year flood boundary as indicated by the maps issued by FEMA. However, there was a lot of question about that term water bodies, comma. What the Commissioner of Public Works went on to do was, he said, the creek is approximately 340 feet long and 10 feet wide. He said, while the code does not, and I'm paraphrasing, the code does not have a definition of water body. The code does refer to waters of the United States as, and then there's a three-sentence definition of the Corps of Engineers, which, waters of the US, it says all streams, lakes, watercourses, waterways, you know, like I said, three, three sentences. But the fact of the matter is, this channel that goes through the property is regulated by the Corps of Engineers. So conservatively, what the commissioner said was, okay, then we will consider that a water body as code, and thus, you would take 340 feet of length, he did it by 10 foot wide, which is 3,400 square feet, to say that should be removed by the, from the gross land area. We can tell you by definition of the Corps of Engineers, which is what the code refers to as bodies of water, that the 10-foot width is, is larger than as defined by the Corps, because the Corps regulates the width of the channel below the mean high water level, which is?
Which is all the 3,000 square feet less.
Okay, which is a width less than 10 feet. But we're going to go with the commissioner's definition. So if we subtract out the 3,400 square feet, we acknowledge that that is a water body by, by, by the subdivision regulations. We subtract out that 3,400, it gets us down to 203,945 square feet of gross lot area. Divide that by 22,000 square feet is the minimum lot size in the R3 district. We end up at 9.27 lots. The remaining items of, of 192-27D, two through three, the commissioner did go through those and noted that none of those areas apply to this, and I believe from the May 5th meeting, none of those were questioned either. We are in possession of the markup that Mr. Anderson provided to the board on May 5th, and, and there were no additional areas. He did make a mention about the slopes, the string bank slopes being greater than 15%. But the fact of the matter is, if you use the 10-foot width, which is top of bank to top of bank, that captures those slopes. So really what we're saying at the end of the day, what the memo that the commissioner prepared, shows that the allowable calculated density per section 192-27 of the code is that there are 9.27 lots coming, or is the yield from this property. Again, we felt that was supported by the original conventional plan that was submitted back in December, but as I stated this evening, what the applicant is willing to do is modify the application and propose only eight lots.
Okay, I think that's, that's changed the lot off. That lot that you removed, actually, was that lot number two, I believe?
On the, on, yes.
Yeah, was it lot number two in there?
Yeah.
And that, that was kind of off.
Right. And on the conventional plan, it was the lot, yeah, the lot that was up in this area on, was in a location down here.
Okay. Um, everybody?
Well, it comes from, you know, it's not, it's not just from me to make this comment, okay? That has to be understood upfront, is that we had three independent residents from the area express a concern that the formulation that's used to determine the number of lots on this parcel was not being followed. And up until this point, it has not been discussed in a public meeting of what was done to follow the regulation. If anything, it seemed like people were looking at, the board was looking at the comments received by the public and saying, oh, they make no sense, when I didn't go and address them. So now we have addressed the public comments, and we have given a reason as to why you have a number of parcels. You've issued a determination that helps define that area.
Well, that's a good point, and that's exactly why I talked to Raji yesterday. I put in a legal opinion, remember I was talking to you guys yesterday also? I talked to Raji, so I want to resolve this thing so we don't get tied up where we're in the middle and we're not, you know, certain where we stood legally, so that was part of it, yes. And with the one lot off, we discussed that, I had issues with it. Ask these guys, how long did I spend in there with you? Saying this isn't going to work, you've got to take one of these out of here. And they did, they cooperated.
You know, and even going back, and I don't want to hear about it, the right-of-way thing, you know, typically it's only 10, 15-foot wide for easement on a water main. Reducing it by that much, you wind up area that supports by those numbers, even if you include it, the eight lots.
Yeah, but that, see the, Derek?
No, they, they.
Go ahead, Derek, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just called to hear you, Derek.
Even if you, the number they came up was winds up being a nine-lot subdivision. If you included the standard width easement, right-of-way, whatever you want to call it, for the water authority to be able to come in and service their water main, that smaller area, not the entire 67 feet wide, 78 feet wide, whatever it's supposed to be with that, that smaller strip subtract out of it, you still wind up with eight lots. So either way, supports what they are proposing is a cluster development of eight lots.
Yes. Before I forget too, Peter, on that, when you, well, all of you, I think the last drawing we saw, he had a 24-foot road, just make sure with the fire marshal, I think he went, he was talking 26-foot?
Yes.
A while back, just, so when you come in, when you come in, if you got questions, contact Josh, Jeff, myself, I don't care, but let's just get it right. So when you come in with your preliminary drawings, we have everything that needs to be there for the final, the same night.
Correct.
You know, the final is nothing more than tweaking a couple of things in the preliminary, and hopefully they're both the same drawing, and we get this thing out of here.
Yeah, the plans will address the PRC comments, and, yeah, there was a shoulder added to the north side of the private road, so that there was the 26-foot, 26-foot wide driving surface as required by the fire marshal and the fire code.
Mm-hmm. We did have, again, this was posted as a public hearing, and we have a lot, we did get a letter from Cynthia Vars, and she basically is quoting what the cluster development code says, 192-27. She's really going through it. And I've read it now a couple of times, and everything that she's got in here is basically what we're doing, and that was, we even, you know, discounted one of the lots. So I think we're well in conformance of what the cluster code is. Number of lots, she cites different things, and she's basically talking the code, you know, cluster development, water bodies, adjusted gross total area for the parcel is determined by subsections and so on. And this is all the things that we've already discussed and done, so appreciate her comments. She's got good comments, she'll do some work on this, no question. And the developer needs to be able to actually configure a plan with the lots, public space and roadways onto this, she calls it a bacon strip property, I never heard that one before, in adherence to our, our three single-family residential traditional code, before it can be known how many dwellings would fit. This has all been done, that was one of the main things, that has been done.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, we've got it. So I guess as far as I can see, Cynthia, I think we've pretty much completed this. You can contact me again if you heard something different here tonight. Uh-oh. Shouldn't have ever said anything else. Hello?
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 Hi.
Is this the board meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay, could I make a comment when I, when it's up to you?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. You timed it very, very well. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, what is your comment?
Well, I was, I wanted to comment to the board.
Yes.
To the meeting.
You're, you're here, you're with us right now.
Um, I, okay, um, let's be a lag. Okay, um, I just, the, um, the way I read the code, oh, I need to, okay, the way I read the code, you need to be able to fit a regular subdivision on the property before you can do the clustering. And they talked about a, a sketch that they did where they sketched that out. I just wondered if that could be somehow included in the record?
Yes.
So that the public could see that they managed to fit everything they're trying to fit according to the regular zoning before the cluster.
Sure. Could we get your name, please?
Yeah, Cynthia Vars.
Oh, hi Cynthia, okay, this is telling, I've, I've talked to you, I've written it in, so, yeah, what you're requesting is part of the code. So what they did originally, they came in with a drawing, with a conventional drawing, which means the number of lots that would fit on that property under a conventional R3 zoning regulation, then.
Okay, I'm just asking if that could be made part of the public record?
It is, it absolutely is. That, that absolutely, that would be in the file with all the other. Then they come in with their, with their design for a cluster development, which shows the same number of houses, and somewhat, little smaller lots, but those lots that they are developing or proposing to develop under the cluster are, oh, I'd say they're almost all the same size as what the neighbors are, the adjoining properties. So, but yes, both of those drawings will be provided, and they will be in the file. So if I suppose if you came up to the town and saw Josh or Jeff, they would show it to you?
Oh, well, I need to be, is it available to be online?
I don't know if it'd be online, would it?
I don't believe we had the conventional.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they put that online, but you, it would be available at the town hall for sure.
And, and Josh, when we resubmit, we'll include this conventional plan also.
Great.
So it'd be part of all those documents.
Yeah, I remember when we could make PDFs of the document, but I've been able to work from PDFs.
Are you there Cynthia?
Documents. Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, I didn't know if you were talking to me or somebody else.
No, I, I've only been able to work from the PDFs that have been available on the planning board website.
Well, here's, here's what's going to happen, they're going to be coming in, and I'm going to guess in a couple of weeks, our next meeting, and then they will have all their final drawings completed. Right now, this is, they went backwards with this whole project here. They started right from scratch, so to speak. So the next meeting they come in, they'll So the next meeting they come in, they'll have all their final drawings.
Okay.
That way there, I think you'd be able to see them at the town hall.
All right, it's just that I would like to see the plan for the regular zoning. Um, I'm still, I'm glad it's gone down to seven lots, I'm still not sure they really could fit that many under the standard traditional conventional zoning that the code requires.
All right, engineers from the town, from the, from the developers, everybody concurs that yes, it absolutely does fit. So there's no discussion on that point as far as is it, you know, is it feasible? Yes, it is.
Well.
Um, I'd suggest, you know, just to satisfy, I understand your concern, I'd, I'd suggest what you do is in a couple of weeks is to, actually, the next meeting they come in, it'll be televised and the camera will focus on those drawings and you'll see, they'll show both of them, you'll be able to see them, but to see them up close and personal, I'd suggest you set a time up with Jeff or Josh up at the town and set a meeting with them and I'm sure they'd be more than happy to show it to you. How's that work for you?
Um, in the regulation, in the regulation, it says that the planning board can require, can, they don't have to, but they can require the builder to, um, show the plan with the traditional zoning. And I'm not sure that they did and he didn't have to. Um, but now, it was mentioned just a few minutes ago that there was a sketch and I would just be interested in the sketches if I could see that.
That's what he's showing right now. I don't know if they can focus on it on the camera.
Yeah, it's been on the screen.
No, what I see now is seven lots and pretty colors and it's very nice, um, but it's still the cluster development.
No, this isn't the cluster, this is the conventional. What, what they're showing tonight is just the conventional. They're not showing the cluster. They're showing what could go there. That's, that's the conventional drawing. Is that on there? Is that, yeah, there it is, you can see it right now. That is the conventional drawing right there.
I am.
See it?
In order to just park on the phone, I can't see at the same time. I, I, maybe I can turn the volume down, just a second, it's going to be weird for a second. That's the other.
She just said.
Okay, so there's a lag in what I can see, okay, so now, now to me that looks like lots and no roads, so how do we get to any of those lots?
The roadway, see the roadway in between them, it comes in off of hard road. The roadway comes off of hard road.
Right, but it looks like it's in all of those lots.
Well, it does, it goes down the middle of it.
Those lots you're seeing. Or is that part of the lot?
Well, it's, it's getting into details. The roadway, you see the roadway going in, the two straight lines going east and west, that is the roadway going in. The lots on the north side of it and the south side of it are actually, their lot line is the middle of that road, so that road is an easement because it's not a dedicated road. It's a private driveway road, so to speak. So their lot lines go to the center of that road.
Yeah.
Okay?
In order to have a subdivision, according to the Town of Webster code, there's actually supposed to be a sixty-foot road.
See, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, geez, um, that is not a, that.
It's in my letter.
Yeah, I got you and I saw it, I read it and, and everything you wrote is basically what we're doing. The code says on a dedicated road, like on the road you live on or my road, any of them, they are, they're sixty-foot. That's a dedicated road that the town takes. This is like a private driveway going back to these houses. So this driveway, roadway, whatever, let me finish, this is only twenty-six feet wide. So thirteen feet of that road is on the people on one side and thirteen feet, the people across the street from it. So it's a private drive, twenty-six feet wide. They maintain it, the town pays nothing to maintain it, it's all up to the owners. See, it's, it's a different, it's, go ahead.
It's a completely different animal.
That's right, exactly.
And it does not, it does not adhere to the code for the Town of Webster for R-three zoning.
It does, but it's under a cluster development part of the code, it's just under a different part of the code.
Well, in order to be a cluster development, it first has to be able to fit as a traditional conventional subdivision.
Correct.
The lot has to be able to be divided into a traditional subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
And then it can be a cluster is when you take all that same number of buildings, which I cited twice in my letter.
Yes, yes.
There's two different places in the code and then you move them so that they're closer together so there's open space for the whole development. That's the point of clustering.
And that's what is exactly what they're doing Cynthia, that's exactly what they're doing.
No, but this road, this road is out of, there's nothing in your code that says you can have a shared road among seven lots or whatever.
Yeah.
It's only twenty-six feet wide.
Unfortunately, that's not so, yes, you can. It, it's a private road. It's a private road. The town does pay not, pays nothing for the maintenance of it or anything. That's all private, the snow flowing, cleaning, repairing, everything.
So it's really something else completely different from the code.
Well, it's not different from the code, it's part of the code, it's a different, a different auspices of it, if you will.
There's nothing in the code that talks about a twenty-six-foot shared road.
Private roads aren't allowed within the code. Because we're just rehashing, it is a dedicated road when it's sixty-foot wide going through a subdivision. Under private property, it can be the twenty-six foot, it can be twenty-six foot wide and owned by the people that live on that particular roadway, if you will. So it's a.
Is there a similar one elsewhere in Webster?
I'm sorry?
Is there a similar one out, elsewhere?
Yeah, we have several of them around town. Um, off topic, I can't think of which one right now, that with private drive on it, we've got, we do have them though, I can't, my mind isn't there right now, but yes, we do have them, yes. Yep. I'm, I'm going to suggest again once, I would, I would, I would call Josh up at the town hall and set a time, maybe in a couple of weeks, and come in and you can take a look at the meet, at the, meet with him and, you know, take a look at the drawings. They would be the completed ones, you'll understand better, you'll see to them. Okay?
Well, that twenty-six-foot road is a point of contention, it's part of my concern.
And actually, it's quite wide.
We can add to this conversation.
They couldn't, they couldn't be at a twenty-four-foot, but the fire marshal wanted a twenty-six foot, so that's why it's even twenty-six.
Well, there would have, if it was a legal subdivision according to the Town of Webster code, the road first would have had to been sixty feet, then they could put their lots on, then they could take that many lots that they were able to fit the whole subdivision on, take only that many to then follow the rules of the cluster development. That's how the code is written.
Look at it this way, I know how the code is written, I know it very well, especially after talking here tonight. Reality is, that's a private road and as taxpayers, we don't have to pay to maintain it. How's that, does that help you at all?
Uh, no, because it changes the value of the houses around it and they're all taxpayers.
Okay, all right, we don't want to get into discussion, off topic. I'm going to suggest one more time, just go, set a time up with Josh and we can, I'll, I'd be happy to come in and meet with you also.
That'd be fine.
Okay?
Well, I told you I can only deal with PDFs online, so not really okay, but we can.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, better, better to come in and see, see the actual drawings, it's better than looking at just a picture, you know, the way you're seeing it now.
No, actual drawings that I could blow up on my computer actually are better for me, thank you.
Well, this is, when you see the drawings are even bigger, so come on into the town and we'll set it up with you, how's that? Okay?
It doesn't work for me, like I said, so we can end this conversation.
Okay, well, appreciate your comments, you did have some good comments, I appreciate that Cynthia.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, I know, take care.
Bye.
All right. Sometimes I think it's just difficult to understand what the difference is between a conventional and a cluster and, you know, she's citing the code and she's correct with what she's saying with the code, but it's all being followed all the way down through.
Well, perhaps, I don't know, but the Commission of Public Works memo, the May sixth memo, should one be part of the record and two, um, share with the board and three, would it be beneficial to have that information that the board deemed appropriate?
What he was just reciting out. Do I take note of that, Josh, make sure, just, Jeff has got it, I mean, I, I know, I saw it, I did get it.
I saw it.
You saw it?
It's the board's decision to publish it, but.
Yeah, no, no.
It'd help the public in seeing that the board is listening to me.
Well, it should be part of the record, I mean, it's all part of it.
Yeah, whether the board wants to make that available to the public.
All right, anybody else, any more comments or anything?
I guess what our concern is a, a private road, you know, she's looking for a definition of that within the town code.
Talk about.
She's, she's looking for a definition of a town, of a private road within the town code and what I've looked at it before, the only thing I ever see is the definition of a street that says public or private. A public or private way which provides access to a property, it's the only place it ever shows up is the definition of a street, word private road.
But it doesn't.
So they are allowed in the town.
It doesn't give dimensions.
It doesn't give any design criteria for a private road.
Because I know, I know in the past, we've done them and, and we've, we've had twenty-four foot.
Yeah, there's one over on, off a bay road, I think.
And the fire marshal at the PRC commented, he says, uh, because of the, because of the length of it, he said, I'd rather see a twenty-six feet wide in the event that there were two fire trucks or any emergency vehicle and fire truck, anything going in and out at the width to, so he wanted to, you know, an extra couple of feet on the road, so.
It's just hard to find a definition of a private road in the code. It only shows up in the one spot under the definition of street.
Yeah.
Is that New York State Building Code?
No, the town code, it's, uh, two twenty-five dash three, one eighteen.
Well, I don't think dimensions for private, a dedicated road, I think. I don't know where it's written or I don't, we're getting off topic, but that's sixty feet, I'm understanding any new, new roads.
Right-of-way.
What is it?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, Rog, I think you're asking how, how the, the width of the pavement, uh, what the fire marshal is referring to, in New York State Building Code, yes, they specify the pavement width based upon the length of the road. Um, and in this case, as the fire marshal pointed out, because of the proposed length, it, I'm going to use the term, it kicks it into this other category in the fire code that requires a twenty-six-foot wide driving surface. Um, and the gutter counts as that, so, uh, that's, that's why the fire marshal, uh, commented accordingly.
Okay. Okay, um, all right, there aren't any other comments, we addressed Mrs. Varsis. Anybody, Dave, any comments or, oh, you're all right, and John?
All set.
Is the cluster development literally just going to be taking out lot number two and everything else stays the same?
Uh, pretty much, yes. Yes, with addressing the PRC comments also.
The, and, and your cluster, the, the detention will be where you actually had it, right, on the backside of those plates, yeah, there.
Correct.
modifies that, yeah, that, that's, all right.
Mark?
I'm.
Just that we can get a copy of that memo, just for, well, sure, it's okay, just so we get a copy of it.
Josh, have, have them resend that out again, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
That way we got it and, that's a good point though, it should be, it should be in the record too.
That's Derek.
Derek, did you get a copy of that?
No.
No, okay. All right, he'll, he'll just have to resend them out, but he, actually, the ones he addressed, you got it Dave?
I got it, I don't understand.
I saw it. I don't know, I mean, I remember seeing it though.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else, anyone, anyone, all set?
We don't have enough to do preliminary form tonight?
I'm sorry?
We don't have enough to do preliminary form tonight?
I'm, I'm not hearing it.
We don't have enough information to do preliminary form tonight, realistically, we're just taking them all out.
No, 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 because there's no drawings, I, that's what I talked to him about, just come in, we'll talk, discuss it. I want to see the preliminary drawings and the final, you know, because they're, they're the same, I don't want it to be, well, subject to this, 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 and, you know, all the changes, just come in with the final thing and they got it beat down pretty well now, I think. So that, any drawing you come in with should be.
But, but the record would show that the board, uh, is in support of eight total lots.
Good evening.
Hi, this is Nicole Fornas, I'm calling to comment on the planning board.
Yes, you're here.
Okay, um, yeah, there must be a lag here. I'm going to turn down the computer so you don't hear it.
Yeah.
So my question is, it sounds like the stream is regulated, regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers and I'm wondering, what other modifications need to be done, the culvert removal, whatever that is, um, will there be a permit needed from the Army Corps and will that be required before the town approves, um, these plans?
Well, I can't answer that a hundred percent, hold on just one second. Army Corps of Engineers has already looked at this, haven't they?
So I'm going to step away and have Martin Yanda step up from our office who coordinates all of our Army Corps work, so he'll be able to explain that to you.
Okay. What was your name again, just for the record again, I'm sorry.
This is Nicole Fornas.
All right, okay, an engineer now that's very familiar with, that's going to let us know what the story is. So actually, if you're listening, you'll probably hear him right on your TV.
So basically, we have to follow, we have to follow, uh, the core regulations about installations of culverts, so we are covered by an existing nationwide permit. And what they require actually is to provide natural bottom at the culvert, we basically, what we have to do, we have to fill the bottom with a stone and, uh, natural soil from the side to about six inches, so there is a continuity for animals, you know, to move through the culvert. But if we follow these regulations, these standards, we are covered by existing nationwide permit.
Okay, so there's a criteria that you have to conform to to satisfy Army Corps of Engineers?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, did you hear that okay, Nicole?
I didn't, unfortunately, we're watching on our computer and there's a very long lag, so we are now hearing the gentleman explain it, but I, I haven't heard any of it yet in, in a while time, unfortunately, so I'll, maybe I'll have another twenty-four foot.
Basically, what he's saying, there are requirements and they will have to conform to them based on the requirements of the Army Corps of Engineers. And he just gave a little synopsis of, of what some of the requirements are, you know, how, how the, how the creek base has to be maintained and so on and so forth, yes.
So there's requirements, but no permit, not necessary?
Yeah, they have to have permits too.
To back crack?
To do the work, yeah.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question was just, will the planning board be giving site plan approval before they receive the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers? What's the order here? Do they have to get the permit from the Army Corps before the town approves or no?
We, what we could probably do, right now, they aren't getting any approvals this evening, there are no approvals tonight, they'll be coming in in a couple of weeks, so if they've got it, sometimes those things take quite a while to get, but what we do to cover ourselves, the town, if you will, is to say, we can give you the approval for the project, but then we make it subject to you getting your approval from the Army Corps of Engineers prior to any, any construction permits being issued.
That makes sense.
Okay?
Okay. That makes sense, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure enough, thanks for calling, Nicole.
All right, thanks, bye.
Have a good night, bye. Okay. That's it.
Again, so like, as I said, so we do have the support for the eight lots that we are-
Yeah, I think everybody's okay with that.
Good eight lots.
It's a change, yes. And I think it's a change for way better too, yeah.
Very good. We'll get the revised application into you.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Take care, Peter.
Yes, everybody stay healthy.
You too. Okay, we'll see you, fellas. Okay. Now we've got one more. And the other application is Kiss Me Cookie Sign located 696 Ridge Road, Suite C. Applicant Vinyl Signs Steve Batillier is requesting a sign approval for a 17-square-foot non, non-illuminated facade sign to reflect the new business name within the Heritage Commons Plaza on the designated parcel. And this is located in MC District. And this is high intensity commercial, and this is under 178-7A in the code of Town of Webster. Yes, sir?
Uh, yes, I come before the board tonight seeking approval, seeking approval for the placement of a sign, uh, over on 696 Ridge Road. Um, the sign is to replace an existing sign that was previously inhabited by End Vape Smoke Shop. I plan on using the same dimensions, uh, the same material, which is an aluminum collaborative sign. Um, it will be single-facing and not lit.
I just put it in the thing out home that, here, you want it? It must have worked.
Do you have a copy?
No, that's okay. I think I'm all right. Just wanted to just be clear what you guys- Oh, yeah, okay. And that met all the requirements, right, Josh? It's not a lit sign or anything. It's just a standard sign going up, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't see any issues with it. You guys are all right with it?
I'm okay with it. It meets, it meets the requirements for square footage.
You might have the samples on it.
I'd be happy to.
This is your, this is your own shop?
Uh, yes, I'm a 50% partner with my wife.
Oh, okay. Well, you mean like you're 10%, she's 90, is that what you're saying?
Generally speaking, yes.
Got it. Okay. Um, Derek, you okay with it?
Excellent.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Pretty simple. You're right, actually, you're right next to the, um, computer store, right? Well, St. Anne's is next to it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right. Um, want to do a secret?
Town of Webster Plan Board considered a request by applicant vinyl signs Stephen Batillier for one 17-square-foot non-illuminated facade sign for Kiss Me Cookie within the Heritage Commons Plaza located at 696 Ridge Road, Suite C, on 1.16 acre parcel having SBL number 079.17-1-81. The plan board classifies proposed action as a type-two action under section 617.5C2 of the State Department of Fly Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Vasan?
Aye. All right. Somebody wanna make a motion for it?
I just got a question first. Does, does the facade need to be cleaned up before the new sign goes up?
There's already an existing sign, uh, that still has the End Vape Smoke Shop sign there. I believe we're just going to, I think it's a vinyl, uh, covering that peels off and will be replaced with my proposed sign.
Somebody wanna make a motion for it?
I'll make a motion to, for Kiss Me Cookie Sign, uh, located- For a 17-square-foot non-illuminated sign. I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Vasan?
Aye.
Okay.
Good, you're all set. Good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I guess that's it for this evening, and, uh, we're done. Yeah, thanks for coming in.